Good evening and welcome to the Millis Public Schools School Committee meeting of April 25, 2023. My name is Stephen Catalano. I am the chair. Ms. Gibbons, the secretary, is going to be a little bit late. Ms. Briggs is coaching a softball game. We'll be a little bit late. Mr. Conroy is here. And Ms. Roach is here. Is this your last meeting, Ms. Roach?
Last one.
Is there anything we can do to convince you to stay?
No.
Is there any amount of money or favors we can give you to stay? We can worry about that at another time. Mr. Mulaney, the superintendent, is here as well as Mr. Wigan, the director of school finance and human resource. Before I begin, I want to announce that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under School Committee. All videos are also available on YouTube. All school committee minutes and agendas can be found on the school committee page of the Millis Public School website. Persons wishing to speak during open session must sign in before the meeting starts. Comments are not to exceed three minutes in time. Individuals also may not name students, staff, or parents. All topics for discussion must be limited to those items listed on the evening's agenda, and all comments must be directed to the chair. The committee may not respond to public comments. It shall be their decision to discuss issues at a later date. And all times are approximate on the agenda. Is there anyone signed in for open session?
No.
No one has signed in for open session. It'd be nice to have someone come to open session and state their name and state their complaint opposed to just scurrying around on social media and in the hallways of buildings discussing what they will do to do a better job than the elected and appointed officials in town. And I'm not directing my comments at you guys because you're here. I'm just, you're the only ones here. So no one signed in, just to confirm. Okay. Thank you. I said I wasn't going to do it, and I, there's a whole nother speech, but I'm going to save that for town meeting. Action items. There's a consideration to approve possible revolving funds in, actually, Terry, before we do that, can we do the teacher rep? I apologize. Ms. Gopie, would you like to come up?
You don't even take my attendance anymore.
Ms. Gopie, you've been stripped from the agenda. You're here. You're a constant.
I was just doing quadratic problems, too, so it's just like there's constants.
So was I right before the meeting. That's amazing.
Were you?
No.
Oh. Do you want me to bring you a lung model to build next time? You can see how respiration works.
Sure.
Okay.
Ms. Gopie, please.
Okay. The kindergarten families interested in Spanish immersion are welcome to attend the immersion interest night tomorrow at 6:30 PM. Elise Malloy and Kelly Anunzato concluded the CFB parent caregiver program last week. They had a lot of parents and caregivers attending and discussed pertinent topics. The third graders will be participating in the bike rodeo this week. So Ms. Tucker and Ms. Bredor have been working with Mr. Kendrick's leadership and outdoor pursuits class to set up and provide this experience. And so the high school students will be helping the third grade students sort of understand and build their awareness of bike safety. Mrs. Alhazah, Mr. McKay, and Mrs. Shea led math enrichment activities over April vacation for students in grades three, four, and five. They were probably doing constants, too. And they did a bunch of skills review, project-based learning, and fun math games, so the students expressed happiness in their activities. Sixth and seventh grade MCAS ELA is today and tomorrow. The middle school drama club is as we speak. We're first saying their entry to the Mass Theater Guild's One Act Festival for middle schoolers. And we have some seventh grade students who are nominated to attend the wellness summit, sorry, at the YMCA in North Attleboro to learn about social media safety, and then they're going to bring their learnings back to the school. So we have Troy Wainwright, Johnny Abraham, Stone DeLuca, Nate Elzenort, Josh Ryerson, Bella Jarjari, Josh Lembibo, Aaron Sawyer, Jamison Rogers, and Tyce Lopez. On the high school end, we had the successful trip from the Galapagos return last Friday. So the students have come back with their tales of adventures and excitement, and I know that Ms. Cheney has already started developing new lessons, actually getting to see the finches of the beaks, the beaks of the finches, so that's pretty exciting. Also, right before break on April 13, our Active Minds chapter was able to participate in the first ever Kyle's Care Conference at Gillette Stadium, and I believe that one of their illustrious drivers was our very own Mr. Mulaney. But the students came back just super psyched about what they were able to see and do and talk with all the other students around student positivity, mental health, and how to help peers in crisis. And that particular organization started this year, and they're probably our fastest-growing club in the high school right now, and it's just a really nice thing to see in light of how the world is going right now. So a big thank you to Beth Morrell for organizing that and Brian Craby. Continuing on the health and wellness kind of slant, we have our, I don't know which annual one it is, I don't know if you remember, Bob, but we have our Health and Wellness Fair this Thursday. So all day long, there are events organized for the high school students. It was organized primarily by Aaron Sullivan and Lynn Molinari. We have keynote events. We've got Jesse the Chainsaw coming back in. There's some fabulous workshops being offered to students to kind of expand their toolkits. The 2025 cohort of STEAM scholars was announced. So this year, it's joining our current two cohorts are Isabella Brioni, Shaylan Conroy, Avery Kovitz, Andrew Fiala, Emma Powers, and Amelia Staples. And then next Friday, Terpsigory has their 15th anniversary, actually, recital and spring gala, so we're very excited about that. We've got graduating five seniors this year, and we've got five ensemble pieces in the show, so the show starts at 7:00, and it should be over by about 7:45. And then we'll have our banquet after the fact. District-wide, the Millis CPAC and the Norfolk CPAC are combining to offer a social this Saturday for parents, guardians, and caregivers. It's from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and folks can access any of the school websites to get more information. And also, before break, we had a really successful night of the arts on April 12. So the cafeteria was filled with art from grades K all the way to 12. It was really amazing. There's a lot of really tasty clay food there this year. And then it was followed by a lovely soul and ensemble concert put on by the high school band and chorus in the auditorium. So that's what I have for you this week.
Thank you, Ms. Gopie.
You're welcome. And I'm going to bring you a lung model to build next time.
What kind of model is this?
Lung. We're going to model how you breathe.
A lung!
Yeah, you're going to learn how respiration works. It's a physical change.
You have a s-
So it's an interplay of Boyle's and Avogadro's law. You're going to love it.
I cannot.
Way more exciting than owl pellets.
I cannot wait.
Okay. You know it's coming, right?
The owl pellets or the lung model?
No, you already did the owl pellets. I'm talking the lung model.
I'm going to be there for the lung model.
Right, because I'm going to bring it over to you, and does anybody else want to? Well, you'll get to, you'll miss the lung model.
I will watch it.
Okay. I'll send a kit home for you to be like Kovitz.
That's a lie.
We sent all the science supplies home. If COVID, I'll send you one, okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gopie. So now, actually, we can do, there is another action item consideration to approve the last meeting minutes of 4/11. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 11.
Second.
A motion that moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I was not here, although they look-
You can still vote even if you weren't here.
I'm an aye then. I reviewed them.
You're allowed.
The motion carries. So next up is Mr. Wigan to talk about proposed revolving fund increases. Do you need to project, Mr. Wigan?
I do not.
Okay.
I think you all have this-
There is the memo, yes.
Yeah, you all have the memo, and I think you have a supporting spreadsheet.
That's correct.
And I have a supporting PC. Once it warms up and decides to talk to me again, there we go.
So as, you know, as just a way of segueing, last year, last, soon into the school year, we realized that we were meeting a significant deficit in extended day, an unsustainable deficit in extended day. And extended day is a fully funded, supported program by fees and tuition, and it's a very worthwhile program. And we took November, we increased, what was our, we did a 15% increase in November for the remainder of this year with the decision or with another discussion to increase the fees to break even or try to break even in the upcoming year. And we had given, what I believe, adequate warning to the parents. There were several parents that came in and sat in on the meeting. They knew, they knew the increase was occurring in November, and then they knew a new one was coming, so.
And that's a good place to start because that's also the first place of-
All right.
Starting from my memo. So we did indeed, last November, have a 15% increase, and we looked at a variety of different things, and that was a half-year increase that started in January and is in place now, and obviously will move forward, but it didn't get us out of the woods. So at the end of this year, we will still lose money in that program. I expect it will be somewhat less than the $31,000 that it was projected, but it will still be a loss that we will end up covering through the operating budget in all likelihood. What the plan was when I originally set that as an option was that in FY '24, we would propose a 6% increase, and that would bring us to a slight surplus, if you will. And then moving forward, basically, the committee could be in a situation where it could do 2% or 3% increases, and it should be able to sustain those slight profitability, if you will, or surpluses, and not have to get back to a situation where you're looking at, you know, that, you know, tremendous 15% increase, hopefully ever again. Now, obviously, there are other factors that come into play at some point in time. You may have to adjust that slightly depending on increases you want to give staff and those sorts of things, but even accounting for that, you really should never be faced with that kind of double-digit increase again. So that is my recommendation to you, and I don't know how you want to take this. Mr. Chair, do you want to take each fund individually? Because I've written the recommendations that way.
Yeah, let's do that, but before, let's stop and ask if there are any, I have a question about this one. We were concerned that a 15% increase, we were going to lose some people that couldn't afford it. Did we lose any kids and parents in November or December?
I guess I would have to answer the question this way. There may have been some parents that we lost, but that was made up by other parents. So in a sense of numbers, we did not lose.
Did anyone approach us for some sort of accommodation if they were really in a difficult place?
They did not.
Okay. And we made that clear that, both at the meeting and I think in letters, that if they, if someone had a significant issue, they could approach us confidentially about, not the committee, but.
Yep.
Okay. So no, all right, that was my main question, and do you have concerns that this 6%, are we going to be in the same position? Because we're talking 15% for half-year and then another 6%, so we're talking a 21% increase. I know it's prorated, but it's still-
You know, again, it's a little higher than I would normally want to recommend for an annual increase, but again, I think, I think everybody understands the situation. It's going to bring the program back in line, so to speak, and that moving forward after this, then we're back to normal, so to speak. But the fact is, is that with everything else going on in the district, that we can't afford to subsidize the extended day program, which is, in fact, an optional program.
Correct. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yep. Terry, what does a 6% increase look like per month dollar-wise? Is it, I see in your memo, it's, I assume, 3%, you said, is about $7, so it's really just about a $14 a month, $15 a month increase?
Yeah, about.
Per child?
About.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Conroy.
Terry, are the, are the employees or the expenditures on here tied to our collective bargaining agreements, or are these set independently of that?
These are set independently, and there are no increases built into this at the moment. These would be still functioning. You, some time ago, had a three-year scale. The three-year scale's been basically frozen. So the steps are still in place, but it's still that scale with no increase.
So the 6% for next year and then what's presented is a 2% increase in '25, 3% increase in '26 and '27. Those are break-even amounts, or in essence, they generate about $4,000, $5,000 a year, assuming there's no salary increases.
Correct. That, now, the one thing I would say to you is that bear in mind that if you're generating, and this spreadsheet doesn't show this, but if you're generating, let's call it $3,000 in FY '24, and then you're generating, and I'm just using $4,500 in '25, well, now you've got, you're carrying a fund balance of $7,500. Okay? Follow me?
Yeah. So what's driving the expense increases year over year?
Yeah. What's driving the expense increases? Typically, it's health insurance. And that's an expense I have no control over.
No, I, I'm just-
What did you use for a percentage increase for that?
Uh, hang on just a second. I don't know if I can get to that quickly. I want to say that I used 5%.
Okay.
That's what sticks in my mind. That's been, for Millis at least, been a pretty good-
Typical?
Yeah, pretty typical.
Question I'm wondering, and this will be the same as we go through all the rest of these, and I don't know if the intention is for us to just vote, or an increased percentage for next year, or if we want to expand the discussion to kind of setting some type of annual increase to compensate for what we know are going to be expenses increases in future years.
I personally would, would rather just vote for this year and then start this conversation as part of the budget cycle in December and January, so then we can give parents a decent run-up, but maybe what we can also do is start to normalize the fact that we are going to see increases. We went years and years and years without increases. We got by, but now we're not in a position to get by anymore. So I'm not sure we should commit to any sort of long-term, three-year increases. I think we do one year with the, we'll have another discussion, but the expectation should be normalized that there will be, and we will make the increases as minimal as possible, but we're probably going to see 2% and 3% increases.
And it should be more like a January discussion, is what I'm hearing.
Absolutely. And we could even start it a little bit early in December, but we really don't have numbers and we don't know what's going on. Next year's going to be in flux, but I think we should absolutely can have the conversation in January and then give parents notice long in advance. I'm less worried about the extended day parents in this case because we were pretty clear with them that there was going to be an increase next year. The only thing was going to be was what that percent increase. So we're not shocking them this late in April. They knew this was coming. So I'm, and the other ones, we just haven't seen it, and I think, going ahead in your memo, they seem more reasonable in line with what used to be the going rate for inflation. So I don't think anyone's going to look at that and necessarily scoff at some of the percentages. Is that, I don't know, did you want to do three, more than a year?
Well, it was, I think we can do it either way. An extended day may be slightly different because they're not tied to the collective bargaining agreements. The other ones that are tied to the collective bargaining agreements, I, my only thought was, should they actually, should they be basically 4% increases annually because we know that the collective bargaining agreements basically go up by 4% every year? So in order to be proportional between the operating budget and the fees, you know, again, we, it can be revisited on any given year, but the, but if we're going to keep things in line with what we know our growth rate is in expenses, it's probably 4. But if we only want to do the fiscal '24 tonight, that's fine.
Let's do the fiscal '24 and start the conversation. I agree with you, and then it'll give the opportunity for Mr. Wigan to kind of map some of this out. And I know you, at different times, have mapped out almost all of these, give you some time to put together a more consolidated memo, maybe on individual ones. So let's just do '24 tonight, and let's do them one at a time. So I would take a motion on an extended day.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I make a motion for Millis School Committee authorize a 6% increase for the extended day program for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
Second.
A motion that moved a second. The only thing I would say, it's not, it's either the, it's the '24 fiscal year.
Correct.
I just want to be very technical here. So the motion, just to modify the motion, the Millis School Committee is going to authorize a 6% increase for the extended day program for the FY '24 fiscal year. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Onto kindergarten, please, or preschool.
Preschool. So preschool, as you know, is a federally and state-mandated program for identified students that also has an equally, or an equal number of non-identified students, or sometimes we call them peer models, for those students. And those are the enrolled students that pay a fee to be enrolled in that program. You had a spreadsheet again that analyzed that, and there is a benefit to making sure that those students will enroll because we do need to try and match those numbers as much as we can. So in looking at where we were and how numbers projected out, really, the feeling was, or my feeling was, is that a 3% increase for at least the next fiscal year would be reasonable and sustainable.
Mr. Wigan.
Yes.
On this spreadsheet, because as you stated, there are special education students where we don't charge those students, right? That's part of their education plan. And then we have, what, peer, peer students?
Peer students.
These numbers are just for sustaining the peer student part of the program.
That is correct.
Because one thing what we don't want to do is increase the fees on the general education students to help cover a sped deficit, right? Meaning that they're there voluntarily, they're not, it's not a mandated program. So this is, we are looking to make that sustainable with, within the general ed.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
Terry, I forget if it was in the memo. When's the last time that we increased preschool fees?
The last time we increased any of these fees was before I arrived. That's five years ago, and I think it was before that.
I will clarify, Ms. Gibbons. We didn't increase preschool. Correct me if I'm wrong, kindergarten. We, we were charging incorrectly. We were charging them for nine and a half months when they should have been charged for 10 months, or whatever it was. They were off, so they, there was a net increase in revenue, but it really wasn't, they were just paying for what they, that was the one thing we did when Jen Sol and I found the fee-based subcommittee. That was one of the issues.
Which was seven years ago?
Easily, yes.
Seven or eight years ago.
13, 14, maybe.
Okay, okay. Just for the public to understand that it's been, that all of these programs have gone without an increase for-
At least, though. And that's the only one-
I think that's the only one-
And that's the only one that we've done in 12 years, at least.
All right. I would take a motion if there's no further discussion on preschool.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we authorize a 3% increase to preschool tuition for the fiscal '24 year.
Second.
A motion that moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Onto the kindergarten revolving fund. Mr. Wigan.
The kindergarten program has had a little bit more difficulty in sustaining itself. And, and I guess here is a situation where it kind of depends on how you want to look at it. Again, you have not increased fees for a number of years, and certainly, a 3% increase will keep pace. I, I had trouble with this, I'll be honest with you. I really felt that a 7.5% increase really brought it back in line to where the base ought to be, but a 3% increase will keep it sort of, it certainly keeps it, the fund balance positive. It certainly will sustain the costs that we expect to charge to it. And obviously, one of the other options I gave you was sort of in the middle at 5%.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Conroy.
So Terry, if I read this right, the 3% increase you're projecting would generate a $34,000 surplus next year.
That's correct.
So we are projecting right now a $12,000 surplus at the end of this year?
That is correct. Now, I would, the thing I'm noting, when I note those numbers, keep in mind, in the current year-
No, it's 27, no, 12, I'm sorry.
For fiscal year '23, we're charging off $188,000 worth of expenses.
Yep.
And what I'm projecting for next year is we're only charging off $139,000 worth of expenses, which is one of the reasons I, you know, suggest that, you know, with a higher level of increase is more expenses we can charge off to the fund.
So what would, what would be a reason that we would need to charge off more expenses to the fund?
At the moment, the way the budget is built, I would say nothing. You know, honesty, things develop during a year, and that's my concern because this budget is, I say this every year to some degree, but I'm, I really am not going to have any place to go. So if for something, if something happens, for me to try and move someone to, let's say, a revolving fund, that would be the reason to have the money. I'm not saying it's a good reason. I'm just saying it's-
That, and that's to Mr. Catalano's point. The scenarios in which that would need, would be necessitated, most likely, deals with sped move-ins and costs that are out of our control and-
Very possibly.
While I agree that we need to make these adjustments, I'm not comfortable going to increases of 7.5% to, to offset risks of costs that have nothing to do with the people that are going to be charged.
I don't, I don't disagree with, with your logic there. I just need to be blunt about how I look at it.
Yep. The 3%, if it generates $34,000 next year, $34,000 plus the 12 we end this year gives us, puts us at about a $46,000 surplus in the kindergarten revolving fund at the end of next year.
No, that, that includes that $12,000. You see, up top, your $12,000 is carried into that.
Okay, so the net projected gain-loss is actually the ending balance.
Yeah.
Right, so it would still have a-
So we'd have enough for a power.
Right, and then we, so it's really generating $21,000 a year.
And that would be an appropriate use of revolving fund. That's, if the increase gives us a balance and then there's a cost increase within kindergarten, it stays within the bucket. I, I agree. It's fine for you to present that, Terry, but that is something that we have battled over the years and with previous business managers that should stay, stay within the lanes.
Completely understand what you're, what you're saying and respect it. I just need to say it.
Nope, I understand, and I, and I also think that the 3% gets us in line with getting people used to, because we should be probably, will probably be- people used to, because we should be probably, we'll probably be seeing 3% this year, 3% next year, and going on.
I would agree. That should be the, sort of the norm, in a sense. You know, the three, you know, I, I understand the earlier conversation about 4% being collective bargaining. This would be one of the, one of the areas that is.
And maybe it's 4% next year, but maybe the first time out, being this the first time.
Yeah, absolutely.
If there's no more discussion, I would take a, take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Roach.
I make a motion for Millis School Committee authorize a 3% increase for the kindergarten program for the '24 fiscal year, and at the sliding scale be adjusted accordingly.
Second.
A motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So the next, we're going to move on to transportation revolving. So what I would like to do is kill a couple birds with one stone.
Okay.
Ms. Rayes from FinCom, who's not here, but the chair is from FinCom, and we are going tomorrow. But there was a question about fees which you answered, so maybe we can, and I, and I owe Ms. Rayes a, an email anyways, but at least we could talk about that here and talk about, I also know, I see that you had prepared a, a larger memo about transportation revolving. So if you could give us a deep dive on that, I think that would be helpful.
Well, so let's start with the revolving fund, which is the fees. Okay, that's where the fees go.
Yep.
And let's go back and pretend there was never a pandemic. And back in FY '18, actually the year before I arrived, the district took in $151,000 in fees. And that was the old fee structure, which had not been changed since, I don't know when, but it was a long time. In FY '19, my first year, it took in 133,000. And then FY '20 hit. That was the first year of the pandemic. And went down to $78,000. In FY '21, it was $73,000. FY '22, $74,000. And this year, it is projected to rebound to about $80,000. So we are looking right now at a situation in the current year where we would have about $130,000 worth of expenses that we would charge against that, which is fairly normal. And I say that, that is about the salaries that we would charge against it normally. It's been up and down. You'll remember, one year, we had to take salaries out of revolving and bring them into the budget. We've tried to move them back in. Okay, so we've gradually tried to move them back in. Right now, it shows it's going to be a minor, I say minor, a $17,000 deficit this year. I think that that probably is going to be wiped out naturally. There may be a few shekels that I will need to, to, to cover with the operating budget, but I don't think it's going to be much, because of course, in the spring, we get registrations. I'm concerned about how it looks moving forward. And moving forward, if we continue at this $80,000 level, even with some growth, and we actually reduce the amount of charges to the revolving fund, we are still looking at some fairly healthy deficits, which is why my recommendation was for a healthy, but not a two-digit, or a double-digit increase. Now, I will say that, and then I will also say in the same breath, that a seven and a half percent increase is not going to get you out of the hole. So I'm not necessarily sure that if your choices are 3% or seven and a half percent, and neither will get you out of the hole, whether or not that makes sense, or whether it makes more sense to do something more moderate, but do that more moderate increase every year for a number of years, and then hopefully between ridership, paid ridership increasing, I should state that, and grants and any number of other ways to offset the deficit, including obviously bringing things into the operating budget, we wipe out that deficit in that fashion. I mean, we've covered it in the past. We've, you know, I, for lack of a better way to say it, I'd figure out how to do it again.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Conroy.
So Terry, just so I can help clarify somewhat for the public, but also for us, we don't run any bus routes that are 100% optional because they're all fee-based students, correct? So, let me back up.
Yeah.
Our fees have gone down roughly 50% since the pandemic came back. My, my guess is that a large piece of that is because there are significantly more parents who are home or have been able to work out transportation, that they don't need this bus that they have to pay for.
I would say that's part of it, but that's actually probably not all of it. What we're finding is we have more ridership at the elementary level, and that ridership is in the area where they are not eligible to pay fees.
So they're outside, so they live outside the two miles?
They live outside the two miles, and, and therefore, they don't have to pay the fees. So it's a combination of both of those factors, because our ridership is up.
So, and the reason they don't have to pay fees at two miles is because by state law, we are required to provide transportation.
We are required to transport K through six.
So every route we run, we would be running regardless of whether we were charging fees or not?
Correct.
That.
Correct. We would be running those six buses regardless of whether we charge fees.
So the deficit is in large part due to the change in the demographics of where our riders are?
Pretty much. Pretty much. We, you know, and, and then, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, there's always those kinds of situations that develop in any community. It just happens to, as you say, the combination of those two things have kind of hit us at the same time, and.
And so we can't cut a route to solve it. So we have.
If anything.
Walk down the, so this deficit is in essence a, we're required to cover all of these expenses.
Correct.
In reality, you know, to the points we've made about revolving fund and fees covering for fee purposes.
Yeah, and I think that.
Scenario is, it would require us putting this 50,000 or 60,000, whatever the number, can't quite figure out.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two-nine.
$60,000 a year, we need to go back into the operating budget because it's really a required expense.
And, and I think in a, in a later note that I put out, we shouldn't make the packet, is I mentioned that if you figure, at least right now, it looks like we're going to get somewhere in the, in round numbers, around $80,000 worth of fees, then there's another, let's call it right now, $64,000 of special education transportation circuit breaker, which typically we haven't applied to transportation. We simply said, we're going to apply it to tuition, which we can do. But it is technically related to transportation. We still have a $750,000 transportation budget. So there's no way that the fees for revolving fund and even that circuit breaker money is going to cover the transportation costs of the district. And that would, I would make that same statement if I was in Holliston, talking to them about the cost of their transportation. The numbers would be different. The statement would be the same.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
Expenses that we apply to the athletic revolving, do we take, do we take either, do we take in any of the athletic fee revenue into the transportation revolving, or do we charge any of the?
We do. That's approximately $25,000.
So you charge athletics.
We charge athletics.
25,000 to cover the drivers?
Yes.
Because some of those are, some of those are overtime.
Right.
Those are straight costs. That's not.
And we cover, yeah, and it's covering the drivers. We don't depreciate the buses.
Fuel?
We do, we do fuel. It, it depends a little bit. I'll, I'll be honest with you. When we're in the playoffs, sometimes I forget to charge fuel.
Terry.
I'm sorry.
I don't know how to respond to that. What is, so here's my thought, and the, the, for one student, the family impact per year for 3% is 846, 5%, it's 1410, and then seven and a half, it's 21, 2115. So that's literally the, the total delta from year to year? Or is that, that's not monthly, Terry, correct?
That's yearly. Those are yearly numbers.
So here's my concern, and I just say this out loud, I don't, I don't have an answer. Seven and a half on paper looks bad, but the 21, and I'm not, I, I don't make any assumptions on what people can and cannot afford, but $21 over the course of the year is not exorbitant, right? It's still $20 more.
If you have one kid.
If you have one kid, and it goes up to 40 if you have, if you're at the family cap, if you have three kids. Second student would be $40, and then the cap is 40. So the question is, do people see the seven and a half, don't really look at the numbers, and do we start to lose people because I'm not going to pay that increase? And I know we don't have the answer, and I don't know if that's the reason not to do seven and a half, but just something to think about, that you do run the risk. And this has been the conversation about transportation more than anything.
We never do the percent, so I don't, I feel like maybe there's been one. I don't even know.
I don't think there has been.
Really?
Again, there hasn't been since I've been here.
From a messaging perspective, I wouldn't even say it's a seven and a half percent increase.
Yeah, I'd just say, here's the new rate.
I would just say, here's the new rate, here's the new family cap. If people want to calculate the increase, then they can do it themselves. And, and the other question I wanted to just post to the group is, would we go higher than seven and a half percent? Because we're not making a dent at all in the funding of this.
But at the same time, this is, the $60,000 deficit is because more kids live beyond the two miles.
Yeah.
So we're.
Do we have a breakdown of the kids that live in the two miles and outside the two miles?
I, sure Sandy has that. I don't, I, that's probably about the one statistic I did not bring tonight. I apologize.
Only from a, like, percentage of, the percentage of.
We've broken it down before. We actually have, we had a breakdown at one point.
Yeah.
Because if, I mean, we've, historically, the salaries that have gone were 117,000 in 2018, 138,000 in 19, 119,000 in '20, '21 doesn't count, and neither does '22, really. And we're talking about 130,000 this year and 180,000. So the salary changes haven't really, what we've charged into this account hasn't changed that much over time. It's the lack of paid ridership that's gone down.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd agree.
I hear what you're saying. I just.
No, I get it. It's putting it on the backs of the people that.
We want to balance it.
Yeah. At the same time, if it hasn't been increased in 10 years, and if the financial impact goes from $40 to $50 for the family cap, I'm just trying to, and I don't even know how much of a dent it would put in if we had another two and a half percent, or two and a half percent.
Well, 3%, 3% increase is, is $2,000. So if we go seven, I mean, even the seven and a half is only giving us $6,000.
I know, I know. There's no way to dig out of this hole.
You can't go high enough to try to.
Right.
Yeah, it's like death by a thousand paperweights.
You can't solve it.
Right, yeah. Okay, I'm done.
I think.
I mean, I guess really the.
I'm okay at seven and a half. That's what I meant by I'm done.
So the question is, so what are the realistic options? Because we can't have a, we can't have a $60,000 deficit in the fund at the end of next year.
Do they want to pay for the bus, or they don't?
Well, I think.
But even if we do a seven and a half, like, we can't raise it enough to close the deficit, so.
Well, and I don't think it's fair to try to, because it's a, it's a mandated program.
Correct.
So now we're taking the, the people that choose to, to use the program and making, and, and raising the fees high enough to then cover, it's never, it's never going to work.
I think the tricky part is we don't, we're not going to know what that number is exactly going to be.
Yeah.
Until.
People sign up.
People sign up, and people sign up, they'll start signing up now through, they honestly, they'll start signing up through August.
I know. I used to sign in three days before school. I was.
Yes. I, I didn't mean to look at you.
He's walking to the office.
Multiple years. I was like, oh my God, Jack's going to take the bus.
But, but I mean, it's, so it's hard to, it's hard to get a feel on this. One of the things.
I think what it means is that the 60,000 is a number that we have to factor into the fiscal '25 budget discussion of it has to roll in. That 60,000 is going to have to roll into the budget.
As a cost of funding outside of two-mile riders?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other thing I was going to say that we could do, I'm always reluctant to do this without my staff present, so that they have a chance to yell at me when I say these things. But I think this is one area where we have not historically offered, we've offered an early discount. We have not necessarily offered a payment plan. And I'm not necessarily, I'm not necessarily interested in offering a monthly plan. I'd have to think about it. I'd have to come back to the committee.
A half-year plan, like a half-year payment.
Like a half-year payment, and maybe the fee is slightly higher, but you get to split it into two payments.
Do we offer, I don't know, do we offer like AM or PM, or is it?
No, we do not. And there's a reason for that, and that's safety. We, we want to know what, we want to know the student is, oh, I see what you're saying. In other words, just AM transportation, or just PM transportation?
Yeah.
We do that as long as it's the same stop, but we, I don't think we discount the, the transportation fee for that. And the reason being is we have to hold the seat. Once the seat is occupied, in other words, once that seat is occupied, whether it's AM or BM, I can't give it to another student.
All right. Who, who wants to make a motion on this? We've been all over the place.
Are we doing seven and a half? Is that what we decided on?
Denise wanted 30%. I don't, I don't.
I wanted a breakdown of the riders outside of two miles.
No, no, you said, it's been 10 years, and you had 3% in your head. So you were going to.
First of all, stop screaming at me.
Sorry.
I think a $40.
We want to make Carrie's last meeting lively.
I think a $40 increase over the course of a year, that's 360 bus trips, if you go to and from.
How did you have that number in your head?
You have 180 days.
Oh, okay, that's easy.
So I think it breaks down to 11 cents a ride.
Which is more than you pay for gas. I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult, but.
No, I think it is $4 a month.
Yeah.
I, I, and that's why I reacted to the number, even though I brought up the seven and a half percent. When you look at the max, it's 40, it is $40.
But we're never going to close that gap, so.
But we have to start somewhere. That's the problem.
But we're not going to ever close the gap on fees.
No.
The 60,000 is not going to get, is, it's not going to happen.
All right, what's your motion?
Okay, but with the, so sorry, with the cost of gas increases, with the lack of increases that we've done to the bus driving fees, since we haven't increased over a bunch of years, and with the cost of gas, if I just take those two things alone, I feel like seven and a half is reasonable at 40 bucks a year for, for two, two children or a family cap.
Do I get a second?
Does she make a motion?
So I'm, I'm making a motion to, when am I making a motion?
Of course, they're going to make a motion.
Sorry. For the Millis School Committee to authorize a seven and a half increase for the transportation program for the fiscal year 2024. Second.
Now a discussion. Mr. Conroy.
No, I, we, we do seven, if we do seven and a half, and then we're, but I think we're looking at three or four next year, and it, off the top, I think we've just added $50,000 to our FY '25.
Totally agree.
Problem.
Yep.
That we're going to have to put into the operating budget.
Yeah.
But that's a problem regardless of the fee increase.
Correct. Like, we're, we're doing this fee increase. Correct, like, we're, we're doing this fee increase. We increase them again next year at a, you know, 3, 4, 5%, whatever that number is. But the true problem is a $50,000 transportation mandate that we solve.
Ms. Roach, you good with seven and a half?
I second it.
Well, that's just to get the conversation going.
Yes, I'm good.
You good? All right, all in favor? Aye. Seven and a half percent. And Terry, try to look to see, I don't want to create more work for you and your staff, but if dividing them into two payments helps a little bit-
We might be able to divide them into two payments. That might be easy to manage.
Check it out. Don't, you know, if it, if it becomes more of a problem, then don't do it, but if, if that helps a little, why not?
Okay.
How much capacity is left on the buses? Like, is there, can you add quite a bit?
We'd add a bus if we could. We can't find a driver, so it's kind of irrelevant.
So I want to take a moment. It's our meeting. No one's here. No one's watching. Mr. Barubi, no, 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 no. I don't scream at people who's- The, Mr. Barubi, do you have any specific questions? Because we're going to talk, we're going to talk transportation potentially tomorrow with you. We'll get back to Sarah, but do you have anything specific? We have no problem going off the, okay. Anything else you want to add on that?
On the, on the transportation fees? Transportation fees? No.
So just, and I'm going to forward this to the FinCom tomorrow, but to be clear, transportation costs the district plus or minus $750,000-
Correct.
Of which $80,000 is offset by fees.
Correct.
We get another $64,774 in transportation circuit breaker reimbursement, a relatively new phenomenon, although we've generally applied this to the tuition costs, because there is a, the, transportation is a significant cost to the out of district. So it's all one, it's one program, but we will never be able to cover the cost of all of-
No, we would-
Not even remotely close, even with a 30% raise.
The only thing would be if ridership went back, paid ridership went back to what it was before the pandemic.
The, I guess the other thing I would say about fees-
But we'll never make 800. We're never going to bring-
The other thing I would say about transportation revolving is one of the reasons that, or one of the things that used to happen periodically when that fund would have a fund balance that could support this, is that's how you replaced your vans.
Yep, I remember.
And now you can't do that, which is one of the reasons your fleet is now old, which is one of the reasons that your maintenance costs for your fleet are high.
I understand. Okay, if no more discussion or questions about transportation, we'll move on. Athletic revolving.
Want some good news?
Always, always.
I, I, I really think you could sustain this with a 2% to 3% increase. Derek has done a wonderful job managing, you know, the, the boss would have to talk about athletics in general, but certainly managing the athletic budget, I think he's done a wonderful job. He's worked with me extensively, and I think both the operating budget and the athletic revolving budget are in good shape. So I think a maximum of 3% is, is all you really need to keep this moving forward. I would do something. I would not do nothing. But if you wanted to even go as low as 2%, I think you could do that.
Any questions?
Yeah, does that, does that, I know we had, in the past few years, we had sort of always asked about uniform replacements and all that. So does that, the 2% or 3%, does that still give enough money to replace uniforms and do all that stuff that they need to do?
It, it should. Now, we're taking a cautious view on uniform replacement next year at this point. We're waiting to see how budget and everything sort out. Okay, we do have a plan. He's developed, he's developing, he's been very good about developing a plan for uniform replacement, for helmet replacement, for other equipment replacement. So he's been very good about developing those plans with me.
Okay.
So, so those are, those are either in the works or exist. And of course, we do the, like, the reconditioning and that sort of thing already. I think the, the thing is, this is an unusual year. So to some degree, we want to make sure we understand what happens first, and then, once we know what has happened, we can then go forward from there and say, okay, well, looks like we're in, you know, this is the shape we're in, so therefore we can move forward and do this part of the plan, but maybe we have to hold this part of the plan for a year, and that sort of thing. So, and, and Derek's very good about understanding that and being flexible and, and adapting. He's also, you know, I, I, I thought his predecessor was good at working with getting deals from vendors, but I got to tell you, I think he's better. So it, it all helps. It all, you know, helps us get the things we need for kids.
So we are, there's an adult monitoring the deals that he's getting from the vendors and a third party to make sure that we're not putting the district or individuals in any sort of-
Well, I think there's three of us, really.
precarious liability-
That is correct.
Fraud, waste, and abuse IG type stuff, correct?
I know. I see him almost every day. I know Bob sees him on a regular basis.
I would like the record to reflect that you didn't answer my question. You deflected. You're watching and monitoring to make sure he doesn't get himself in trouble. About getting deals and stuff from vendors.
He doesn't get himself in trouble. He comes and asks me. No, all right. He comes and asks me.
He was at an athletic director's meeting, and they have all vendors-
Sure you want to do this? Dave, record this, please. Thank you.
Vendors in the, the gymnasium, and, and there was one vendor selling, whose company did high jump bars.
Oh, yeah.
And the vendor was from Connecticut, and he didn't feel like packing all his high jump bars into his truck if he could get rid of them. So Derek got probably a $150 high jump bar for 50 bucks. He put it in his truck, and we have a, we have a, a high jump bar now.
Do we have anyone doing the high jump?
We do have, we have high jumpers this year. We didn't have high jumpers last year. We have high jumpers this year.
Do we have mats?
No truck.
We have mats right under 50 yard line of the football field.
You understand, you understand my point.
I do, and I will, I will say, I will say, answer your question this way. Derek has not signed one single contract without coming to me, showing me the contract, saying, will you be willing to sign this? And I'll look it over, and I'll say, yes, Derek, this is great. No, Derek, this is not great. So we're, we're good.
You understand. You got it.
I got it.
You got it. All right, so-
So is it 2% or 3%?
Part of me thinks, if we're going to be doing 3% going forward, we might as well do 3%. Ms. Roach, would you like to make a motion?
Chair.
Ms. Roach.
I make a motion that the Miller School Committee authorize a 3% increase for the athletic program for the FY '24 fiscal year. Second.
The motion has been moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Conroy. Just ask, maybe at the beginning of next year, can we get Mr. Finney to come in and show us the replacement, uniform replacement schedules?
Yes.
And what things are, so that we can, one, know, and then make sure that we factor those in as we do this?
Yep.
Because I know that the, last year, finally, the girls' 2010 championship teams' uniforms were finally retired 11 years later. The freshman girls aren't wearing them anymore.
We could almost make it a competition. We could bring in the high bar, and the higher he jumps, the more money we could find.
You like it when Ms. Coopies brings in props?
Ms. Coopies is bringing in a lug. I, I'm not sure why she's bringing in a lug.
I think we're finding no money next year. Maybe, maybe down the road.
All right, I got, I got that one.
All right.
Do we have one more that we're going to discuss?
Do you have the summer program?
Yes, so there is a, a summer preschool program. Extend, it's an extended year program. It's peer enrollment. So the students, the non-IEP SMED students-
Correct.
Their counterparts, that we're calling them peers.
Right.
So this would be an peer, a peer enrollment fee for an extended school year.
Yes.
And that was prior to COVID. The Millis Public Schools offered a program, a summer that enriches preschoolers, or known as STEPS. Within the extended school year program, it was an integrated program, special education and general, general education students for children's and preschool ages 3 to 5. The program took place four days a week for three hours a day, and consisted of five weekly themed-based sessions. The cost for general education students to participate was $85. I'm assuming that's per week?
Per week.
Right, and we'd be looking at-
Per week.
Increasing it to $95.
So this is peer modeling, and due to the need and the benefit for some students to participate in this model, it's being proposed that we bring the program back for this summer's extended school year program. So we have more kids who need to be, part of their IEPs is year-round education, and now we need to bring in the other general ed students-
Correct.
To, as a peer program.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, like, extended school year doesn't have to have that component, but, you know, we think it would be good to have that component.
So your recommendation is to increase from $85 to $95 a week for the STEPS program, for the students that have to pay.
Four hours a day?
Yes, 12 hours a week.
12 hours, 12 hours a week. That's for the week.
Is that enough?
Well, I was trying not to break.
It gets, it, it, and anything we get is, is just gravy because we have to have the program anyhow. We have extended year anyhow. Anything we get-
It's all gravy.
Is going to, because we've already budgeted for extended school year because we have to have it.
Got it, got it.
Okay, I would take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I make a motion that the Miller School Committee approve a rate of $95 per week for the Miller's preschool extended year program for fiscal year 2024, known as STEPS.
Second.
The motion has been moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Okay.
Yes, okay. So on to, we have no time in learning.
Correct.
No, no time in learning. So under the chair report, there's two things under the chair report. One is the MSBA project update. If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Gibbons, did I see something come from downtown? Did we, the, the RFP was approved?
I didn't think it was that. I thought it was the fully executed feasibility agreement.
That came through.
Oh, that came through. So-
We're still waiting for the approved RFS to come back from MSBA review. So we should see that this week, because this week is two weeks.
That's what, okay, so that was, I looked at it very quick. It was, okay.
I thought the same thing when it first came in. So we have, so the select board had approved that. We sent it to the MSBA for their counter-signing. They've reviewed, counter-signed, and returned it back to us. Now we are just waiting for their review to complete on the request for services for the project management fund for us to get started. Yep.
And then we can start that process, and that's been mapped out.
Which tentatively is scheduled to be wrapped up the beginning, middle of July. So we'll be in selection process until then, no money spent until then, only money would start to be spent in the July timeframe.
And we had a, we had a school building committee meeting last week, and part of that discussion was that this project will move forward, and that there's no one, either on this committee, I represented, that no one on this committee was looking for this project to stop, stall, or to pull out of the project. And there was no overwhelming sentiment at all, or anyone talking against the project at the school building committee. So we're proceeding as is.
I agree.
Okay. The next is the budget. Mr. Malaney, would you go, could you go through at a high level, not naming individual positions, but could we go through the cut list?
Sure.
And walk us through what we will see. There's, there's kind of three different buckets. So if you could, the, we got one, we're projected, if all the votes pass, let me be clear, we're projected to get 1.4, which is $600,000 less than, or roughly, roughly $600,000 less than we need. So we are making cuts no matter what, and then we have, we have designated cuts to be made if the stabilization fund doesn't pass, or the free cash vote doesn't pass. And I guess technically, we've also looked at if the increase to the operating budget, which would be the worst-case scenario, so that from, instead of the 6%, we go back to 4, or whatever people propose. So if you could walk us through, once again, we'll be at FinCom. I know we discussed this significantly, but in case questions come up, we want to be prepared, and then we also need, need to be prepared to answer questions at town meeting floor next week.
Okay, so in some of these numbers, Mr. Conroy already presented to, at the select board meeting and the FinCom meeting. So right off the top with expenses, we're looking at cutting $91,563 worth of expenses. The rest of the cuts would be from salary lines, in the total with the, I call it the best-case scenario, the 6% budget, the stabilization fund money, and the free cash would be looking at $637,794 in salary line cuts. So included in that would be administrative salary cuts, with administrators taking zero. Some salary line cuts dealing with deferring overtime projects and different stipends that we wouldn't have available. That's another $72,000. Ed reform cuts, we'd cut that line in half, and that's the money for, if we have teachers go out on extended leave and things like that, so we'd cut $75,000 from that line item. When we get down to staff, then we get down to the FTEs. And some of them would be cuts through attrition, and then some are actual positions that are filled right now that we won't have next year. So in the, the best-case scenario, through attrition would be losing a .5 of a technology person, .5 of custodian, the high school careers coordinator, a 1.0 middle school interventionist. We'd be losing .4 of middle school Spanish, and that would be through attrition for a position that was vacated partway through the year, and we did not fill.
Can I just, just, and I know, we know this, but just to clarify, even though they're through attrition, it is, it is not a duplicative position that we are-
It's a position we will not have.
We are reducing it, and in some cases, we are, the choice to reduce the position is because the circumstances of, it is vacant, or it will be vacant, and so in order to not lay off a person who is currently working and staying in the district, we are reducing positions that are going to be vacant. But it's, they're not, these are positions that, if not for this need to reduce, we would be replacing because, so all of these attritions- services are being, that they provided will not be provided to the district next year.
Thank you for clarifying. 100%. And, and, and some of that, it's also a function of our collective bargaining agreements where we, the first thing we look at when making reductions in force are in attrition, where it is the best, you know, best educationally. A 1.0 grade five teacher over Clyde Brown, a pre-K teacher in a pre-K para, a Millis, excuse me, a middle school, high school library position cut from a- excuse me, middle school, high school library position, cut from a 1.0 to a .5, and a reduction in high school art by .4. The total come, that total for the best-case scenario comes to 6.4 FTEs. And...
And those are the cuts we're making regardless. We have to make.
Yeah, yep.
And, and the administrators, I know you mentioned it, but the administrators taking voluntarily taking 0% allowed basically the equivalent of another paraprofessional, value of a paraprofessional position to be saved. So it would, that...
It's almost like another FTE.
Correct. Okay, what's scenario two?
Okay, and then the scenario two, which is the 6% base increase and free cash, but no stabilization money, the cuts I just outlined. And then cuts in middle school language arts, 2.0 positions there, middle school interventionist, .2 middle school high school PE.
What's the interventionist, one?
1.0, yeah. .2 middle school high school PE. The other, .5 of the middle, high school library aide, so there'd be no library aide, a high school para, para at Clyde Brown, and .2 middle school Spanish. And that brings the total into that scenario, we're looking at 12.3 total FTEs.
So in essence, if the stabilization article doesn't pass, it's another six FTEs.
5.9.
Right, yeah.
Now he's the numbers guy.
Right.
These are very screwed, these numbers are very screwed guys.
And then the, if, if only the 6% base budget passes, we'd be looking at, in addition to all those, eliminating a high school PE position, a high school English position, a high school science position, para at Clyde Brown, the tutors over at Clyde Brown, which there's four people and essentially 2.0 FTE. Reduction of middle school Spanish, 1.0, actually .8 with the .2 from the prior cut, middle school math position, and a high school special educator. And depending on, because certain people could bump, people with more seniority, if their position is cut, they could bump someone who's either non-PTS or has lesser seniority, all other things being equal. Kindergarten para and a middle school para.
That's 10.8.
10.8, let's see, 10.8. Yes, yeah.
So we have 6.4, 5.9, 10.8, 16, 22. But you didn't, you didn't run the no free cash?
No, we didn't, that was the...
That was, I thought that was...
We didn't do the, the 4%.
Right. Oh, okay, all right, all right.
The everything.
Right. So the last one was no free cash. No stabilization.
No stabilization.
Okay, and no free cash. All right, so we, we didn't do the...
The 4%. I mean, that's...
And, and in case there's anyone who thinks this, any of these aren't actually going to happen, you've already communicated to the first...
The people in the first two rounds, I spoke with personally, and then there's so many in the second round, I mean, the third round, I sent an email to all. And I sent out more than the 24 people because of bumping and things like that. So that email went to others. And then, you know, after town meeting, when we know the real scenario, then we'll actually provide the pink slips that are, you know, used in situations like this.
You guys have any questions? No, I'm sorry. I was looking over there. I apologize.
I had my head down, I'm sorry.
We're a little, we're a little unorthodox tonight.
No, it's fine.
Denise, what do you got?
Based on the conversations that you've already had, Mr. Malaney, do you think we're at risk of losing any of those individuals just by them finding other jobs?
Potentially, I mean, obviously, the people in the first here are cuts, the best-case scenario. Unfortunately, those people will be out looking for work. They are, you know, and we wanted to tell them before April vacation so they had time to get their things together. There are some people in the second and third rounds of cuts who have been asking for recommendations and things like that. So that is happening. You know, and again, it's just, you know, we don't know until the votes are counted at town meeting, so.
Any other questions from the chair? I mean, not from the, from the committee? Mr. Burby, what do you got?
We're, we're curious if, since you're cutting partial FTEs, if that would, I guess in some, I'm assuming that in some instances, that will keep some positions as full-time positions and may decrease others from full-time to part-time. Are there commensurate reductions in benefits in that scenario?
If someone were to go below a .5 FTE, in, in the scenarios that, you know, we've worked out here, we really don't have anyone going below .5 until it's an actual 1.0 cut.
Go ahead.
I guess that doesn't matter. So my next question is going to be, did you do that deliberately? You know, it doesn't matter.
It's very difficult to have someone who's not over .5. For example, we've had a .4 art teacher in the middle school for a number of years, and it was like a revolving door because, you know, people want full-time. We have someone in that position now who, the hours just work for that person. But it's very difficult to fill up...
The general answer is just fine. I have no desire to get into specifics of that.
And the, and the point, the cutting out of points, you know, a point of an FTE for someone, it's easier to do in the high school and the middle school because of the nature of the schedules and things.
Like just a section?
They're covering something.
That you're taking out, yeah.
Yeah, you can't do it in Clyde Brown.
It's a, it's almost, has to be a one-to-one.
Yeah.
Mr. Malaney, oh, sorry, go ahead.
If I may, I would anticipate this would be asked tomorrow. Do you know, do you know, you don't have to answer it now, what the potential class-size teacher-student ratios would, would they would elevate to?
We'd know in Clyde Brown. We wouldn't know in the middle and high school, say, because they're in the middle of their scheduling now. So, you know, they're just getting information on how many kids have registered for a certain class and how many, you know, sections of that class we'd run. So I don't have that information now.
But we do know, we do know that for, like, with the...
The fifth grade.
With the, well, the fifth grade, we know, but in the high school, like with the .4 art teacher, the implication of that is the, there are fresh, there is a freshman elective that will not be offered next year. And they'll be forced to take something else.
I personally think that the numbers are important, but the anecdotal impacts of loss of programs, whether it be Spanish immersion, whether it be some specific program, are things that will help people know what they're voting on. If there are, if there's discussion about you didn't do enough, you should have cut more, blah, 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 the thing that is, if you're just talking .1s and .2s and...
People don't know what that means.
Yeah, well...
Anecdotal, this is what it results to the best of your ability. I understand this is sensitive, and you won't know until it's voted on, but if there's discussion about, you know, no stabilization, no free cash, no 6%, I would have that ready.
Your, your, your question is fair, and what I will tell you is, in our executive session and budget subcommittee meetings, that's, we were having those conversations. So we're, the cat's kind of out of the bag right now, right? Where it's not a secret where we're going. We still want to, we still want to protect as much, we don't want to air the individuals' dirty laundry, but the best we can kind of couch it and talk about impacts in general. We'll definitely be prepared for town meeting, and we'll be prepared as we can tomorrow. But those, those questions have been asked internally, behind closed doors, but it's a fair question. Anything else? Anything else, Mr. Malaney?
On the budget, no.
Budget. Do you have anything else in general for the meeting?
I do.
Okay.
So just, some, some good news for next year. Anna Hurley, excuse me, Anna Hurley has been appointed Millis Middle School Principal for next year. She's currently an assistant principal at Wellesley Middle School, and prior to that, she was a longtime teacher and administrator at Dover Sherborne Middle School. And Ms. Hurley was chosen from a pool of over 30 candidates, and she impressed in all facets of the selection process, from paper screening to the initial interview, the site visit, and the parent forum, the virtual parent forum we had. So we're very excited to have Ms. Hurley joining us next year. And at some point, hopefully, we can get her before the end of the school year to come to a meeting and be introduced to the public officially. So that's some good news. Some very good news regarding our tiered focus monitoring report for special ed. The tiered focus monitoring reports are, reports done by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that is essentially an audit to see your compliance with federal state regulations and various programs. So we were fortunate enough to have two of those this spring. And the, the special ed tiered focus monitoring report was very impressive. They, they came up with no findings, which is kind of rare because their job is to find things. And so they, so we were compliant in all aspects. And the representative from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education was very complimentary in our programs, record-keeping, and our use of best practices. So that was very positive. And then the tiered focus monitoring on our English Language Learner Program was not perfect. It was very good, wasn't perfect. There was a finding of partial compliance with teachers in core areas and the sheltered English immersion endorsement that core teachers should be having to their, adding to their endorsement to their license. And we were aware of this, and we were working with the team from DESE on this. And so we had to develop just a corrective action plan, which was basically already in existence to get the few people who don't have the SEI endorsement and our core academic teachers that endorsement in the next couple of years. So a finding, but not a major finding. And eight teachers in the whole district were, didn't, don't have the SEI endorsement. And they will, we will be at 100% next time that tiered focus might have. So all in all, it was very good to have the DESE come and visit and leave with only one corrective action on our part.
You good?
And that is...
Yeah, that is all. Any, any other questions or concerns from the chair, from the committee?
Jeez.
I had to wake you up. So some of you know... What do you want to guess what it's in?
How many of those you have? And like, where is the stash of them?
Tonight is Ms. Roach's last school committee meeting. She joined us in 17... Six years ago.
We've seen a lot, Steve.
The culture on the committee changed dramatically when you came on board.
For the better.
I'm about to be positive. Let me just be nice for 30 seconds because that's all I have.
She's preempting because it's so difficult for you.
Because I'm like, it's going to go off the rails at some point.
Nope, right, nope. I've been practicing all day to be nice. I've watched YouTube videos. I'm confident that I'm going to be good. Carrie was a friend before she came on the committee, and she, to me, I'll speak for myself, is a better friend now. We've gone through a lot, we've worked really hard, and I think this is a great crew. We get along, sometimes we disagree, sometimes we, it's a love-hate thing, but overall, I think we've worked really hard together, and we will miss you. You were strong in many, many parts of your job, and you were, you were the chair during COVID and worked unbelievably hard. And I have nothing negative other than saying you...
Oh, boy.
Your inability to close contracts...
I was just going to say, don't forget all the union contracts I closed for you, Steve.
Your inability, you got us to the finish line and you couldn't close. For the record, Carrie is a, a, a high, high-powered CEO-type person and is very, very busy and had was, and couldn't attend all of the custodian negotiations.
But I went to the last one that Steve couldn't go to.
Let me tell my story. And I wanted nothing more than to finish this contract. And I had to go across the town to have a, to a FinCom meeting, and there was one thing left, and I, we, we needed 15 more minutes. And I left, and Carrie, her second meeting out of 38...
And it only took me two minutes, not 15.
Said, "I finished," and she spiked the ball. But we got it done. Carrie, all, I, I'm sure others will have something to say. You've been a great asset to the district and a great asset to this committee, and you will be missed completely.
Well, thank you. It's been an honor.
Yeah, it's... Does anyone else have anything nice to say?
No, you guys don't have to say anything.
So Carrie, come over here. Sorry, that sounded very...
You know, right? I hope you did. If it cracked.
Did you crack it?
I don't think so. Open it up.
If you happened to swing it to the left as you pull it out of the bag, no one would be...
Did I break it?
No, you didn't.
Oh, my God.
Oh, thank you.
What does it say?
It's like a...
Carry on. RIP. So...
On a brick, on a brick.
We're good.
Is it a special brick?
I think it's, it's sort of like a tradition we started with the Clyde Brown.
You don't put it there?
Oh, it wasn't?
Yeah, it was.
They're out in front of the...
Baker was the first brick.
Did they go underground outside?
No, they've all, they've been doing it.
Yeah. Do we put it outside?
Yeah, it goes out there.
Oh, it goes out there. Excellent.
We're not going to drink on property, but if we did, we would pour some, some beer on it in honor of you.
Yeah, it's been a long...
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you've been, you've... No, I didn't know that. I haven't seen them out there.
You never know.
I don't know that I've never, I've honestly never noticed.
Yeah, you'll notice tonight, as you leave.
Yeah.
If you walk with your head down, you can...
I don't care what you're calling each other.
I know, right?
Thank you, Carrie.
All right, we do have executive session.
At Navarren Tanny's.
We do have.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Peter, if we need to talk tomorrow, just give me... Did we do what we needed to accomplish, or should we go and...
No, I think we're good.
I think we're good. Yeah, I'm going to make a, do you...
Do we have any need for executive session?
Yes, he says yes.
Carrie says yes.
It will probably be brief, but...
Under which one, one or two?
I think probably one.
Investigation.
Yeah, the first.
All right, I'll take a motion. We're going to go into executive session, not to return to open session, so I need a motion and then a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I make a motion for the middle school committee to enter into executive session pursuant to master loss C-30A-21A1 to discuss the reputation and character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Second.
Motion been moved in second. It's a roll call vote. I am an aye. Ms. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Briggs?
Aye.
Mr. Conroy?
Aye.
Ms. Roach?
Aye.
That is your last vote.
It's my last one.
We are...
Executive session, she has one more vote to go.
Oh, we are going into, well, maybe, we're going into...
You have to adjourn it anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Make her stay.
Don't pantomime anything ever again. Come on. All right, we're, we're going into executive session. Good night.